With our meeting minutes from June 27, 2023. May I have a motion on the item?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Move to approve, second from Commissioner Braun. Thank you. Commissioner Francis?
Perfect.
Any comments, Commissioner Braun? Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah.
Commissioner, yeah, Harrison, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. I had a question on the Mill Hill Terrace.
Uh huh.
Now, do we want to note in our minutes the kind of the recommendation that we had a sense of body of? We just said we discussed it.
Yeah, well, if you want to clarify that, we're happy to do so. I did get back to the applicant. I didn't get a sense there was a... I think you're looking for an opportunity for open space is what I was gathering from that and not looking to accept the fee. I had a meeting with the applicant's representative to kind of catch them up and make up, advise them on what your view was. If you think this needs more, we're happy to...
I mean, just for a matter of public record that, you know, we did kind of have a sense of the body. I don't think we had a vote per se, but it's, you know, we defer to others. That's just my point of view.
Commissioner Francis?
And we discussed having it reappraised, but I don't know, did that go anywhere?
I mean, it sounded to me the town...
You thought the appraisal was very low for Charlotte?
To me, it seemed low, but...
Go off of where the tax increases go.
Well, we didn't have any comps or anything, so we're going to have to go by what the town says. And then obviously, the applicant isn't challenging it, so I don't see any need to get anymore.
Yeah, I mean, my takeaway from the discussion, although there wasn't a vote, was that it seemed like you would prefer an open space set aside rather than the payment in lieu, and that would require them to reduce the lot count by one lot to achieve that. And then the debate then was that a four-lot subdivision doesn't typically trigger the open space or payment in lieu requirement unless it abuts existing open space. And there is adjacent private property that subject, you know, the Maplewood, not the Maplewood, is it Maplewood?
Yes.
I got them mixed up. Maplewood assisted living facility has some private open space adjacent to it. They own this piece. They have an opportunity to make that private open space larger potentially with this subdivision. The Conservation Commission didn't feel like there was going to be a useful piece of public open space, given the size of the property. But it was my takeaway anyway that the open space fee that they were looking to do in lieu of open space was the, was not the preferred disposition from the commission. If that's not accurate, I'd be happy to be corrected or clarified.
I mean, I'm sorry, I read them yesterday and I just forget. I mean, my recollection was that at least I expressed the opinion that the fee in lieu made sense, but we were for five units. We wanted a better understa-, at least I wanted a better understanding of what could potentially be, as I think you said, natural open space from the conservation areas nearby. So needing to know that was, I think we needed more information, but that was still there. Needing to know that versus if that can be, what would that lead to? So if we got because of the wet, was it wetlands nearby, right?
Right. Their next step is to make an inland wetland application.
Yeah.
That process is going to result in some sort of likely encumbrance on this property. It was my recommendation to the applicant that they consider a four-lot subdivision and include if they get provision for open space since it adjoins existing private open space.
Okay. I mean, I think that was one thing most people did.
If that is, if that's not the direction that you wish to go, then I can reset the course, but that's kind of what my takeaway was in that discussion.
I thought we, I mean, I thought enough people had said, Commissioner Ford, Commissioner Levy, myself at least, while not knowing what the law was specifically because it was private open space nearby, whether that would fit the regulations of being, having to be public open space.
It doesn't have to be public.
Yeah, it just had to be...
We have examples of open space where a subdivision conveys or establishes a piece of open space that's owned by the association of property owners within the subdivision. So it's essentially a private piece of open space owned by the association of owners. We have example of where open space has gone to the town. We have an example where open space has gone to an adjacent private entity like Cauterban or Aspetuck Land Trust. But all of those...
We had, but we had some questions about whether that would be applicable. We didn't know one way or the other. We were kind of shooting off, shooting off the...
Right. The debate was if you reject the fee in lieu of proposal and require them to provide open space, it requires them to reconfigure the subdivision into four lots.
Yes.
Four lots doesn't trigger an open space fee requirement.
Correct.
And it was debatable as to whether or not that triggers an open space requirement because it's less than four, five lots now.
Yeah, okay. So I don't, I thought we had a consent, what was the consent?
We only say with three commissioners under...
I understand that. That's what my recollection was about our skepticism at the time. And I don't recall what we had. I thought everybody was of the opinion that we wanted open space. We were unclear whether we would get that for four units, but at the same time, we recognized the realistic possibility that we were going to be getting it under five units with a conservation permit and having encumbered in that way. And if that gave us some open space, that was great, plus we would have the fee in lieu of, which would be an extra money. So I just don't have a recollection of where we went after that, though.
Yeah, I didn't feel that there was a majority, really one way or the other.
My recollection is, as I sit here, was we didn't have enough information, or at least I think, to really have a clear consensus on where to go. We wanted to know first off about the four, whether the nearby open space would allow us to get open space under the four parcel provision. At the same time, it was helpful to know what under, in either case, what the conservation would be and what the encumbrance would be under the conservation for either scenario.
Yeah, there's likely going to be some manner of conservation easement over some of these lots, but that's not, you know, you can...
No, you could, yeah.
...whether that's open space or not.
No, but...
It's restricted use of privately...
In my mind, it was practically the same thing, so to speak, being it was going to be back in that area, probably not accessible anyways, whether it was open or...
Right. So the feedback I provided the applicant was to consider a four-lot plan and still be able to provide some manner of open space.
I think that's fine for now.
So we'll see what comes out of the wetlands process. They seem to think that that was a possible avenue to take.
Okay, that's fine. Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, no, thank you for that clarity. And I don't want to belabor this way, but this is only the minutes that we're reviewing. But can, is there any way, this is not really 845 Mill Hill Terrace. If you drive up there, it's not 845. I know we went through that.
I agree with you. Historically, the Maplewood parcel was three parcels that were bisected with a property line that was perpendicular to Mill Hill Terrace.
Right.
When Maplewood was developed, the property lines got redrawn so that there were still three lots, this being the third lot. And for some reason, it maintained the 845 Mill Hill address that it had originally. It no longer has Mill Hill Terrace frontage, so it's confusing. I agree with you. I think ultimately, it should have a Hamlet Hill address because it's, that's where its frontage is, but it became like an orphan parcel from what the parcel formerly, well, the larger parcel was 845 Mill Hill Terrace. That got subsumed by the, whatever the address of Maplewood is, Mill Hill Terrace, and this remained. So yes, it's...
Well, maybe inland wetlands can figure that out.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk to the, you know, it's, that's just the address it has for its tax ID, but I think if there's going to be a development proposal, that's certainly going to change. It's going to be...
All right, thank you.
All right. Can I move this to a vote, the minutes as is, or was there, is there, I'm not sure if we've landed on any kind of proposal, Commissioner Harrison, to make amendments, but...
I'm comfortable with them. I just really, you know, couldn't make that note.
That's fine. I mean, between our conversation, then, now, on the record, minutes are fine, I think, as they are. I mean, I would hope the applicant would be not just taking everything from Mr. Wend, but he can, he or she or it can review the record, should have been here probably, but we can also review the record of our discussion as well.
Yeah, and keep in mind that pursuant to the subdivision regulations, the non-binding, you didn't take a vote, so there really isn't a recommendation.
No, no.
If, had you done so, that's not binding anyone.
No, no, of course.
The time that the application is made, then you can, you know, you can come to a different conclusion if that's what...
We were pretty thorough with the facts that we had at the time, so...
Definitely were.
I think we can move this.
So we kind of left it, I'll call it vague because we, I didn't get a strong...
We didn't have a...
Push one way or the other.
No, because I don't think we had enough information. And we may have been split in many respects on this...
But I appreciate the follow-up conversations, so we can...
Okay.
I think the applicant is prepared to make their application in on the wetlands, and we'll see what shakes out.
Thank you.
All right, can we put this to a vote?
I will, left state, since I was not present.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. See five hands with an abstention, so it passes.
And Commissioner Ford as well.
Yes, I'm sorry, did I not, I thought...
Nope, you got it right.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. Zoning compliance is 1499 Post Road, zoning compliance application of Fairfield University for an amendment to an overall sign plan in the Center Design District.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Fairfield University Bookstore is looking to replace their existing channel letter sign with a new awning sign. In addition to their letter set, they also have a plain awning underneath that. They wish, they've got a rather unique storefront entry within this multi-tenant building, and they wish to combine their sign with a new awning. The overall approved sign plan calls for individual black channel letters, which the majority of these tenants have. In 2012, the commission made an exception to the sign plan to allow a red awning for the Higgins Group at the other main entry to the building that doesn't have, there's a corridor entrance for the tenants that don't have actual frontage on the Post Road, and that's where the Higgins Group awning is. And Fairfield University feels that putting an awning for them would create some symmetry on the building. We did provide you in the agenda link photos of the existing signage and the proposed sign. The sign otherwise complies in all respects to the regulations. They are just seeking, because in 2012, the commission allowed an exception to the standard for this one other awning, that we thought it would be prudent to put it on the agenda for your consideration.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Braun?
I'll move to approve.
Move to approve, Commissioner Braun, second, Commissioner Bremen.
Second.
Commissioner Braun?
Um, question for Mr. Wend. Does this change any, this goes along with our signage regulations and...
Yes.
Doesn't change any destruction to sightline or anything like that?
No, if you, if you look at the image on there, that's their storefront. If you, I don't know if you can go to the image of the existing sign.
That's the proposed sign, right? The awning?
The one you just saw, correct. If you look, this is what's there presently. There is an awning, and then above that, it's hard to see, you've got to go up a little higher, is a letter set that says Fairfield University Bookstore. They want to take the letters off, take that older awning off, and just, if you can scroll down again, to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Bremen.
That sign, which is...
What would be above it now, instead of the letters? Are those windows?
Those are windows for the second floor.
Oh, so they were covered up before? Or the...
No, no, the, the, the letter set, the awning was shorter.
Okay. So I read that this would make it visually similar to the other sign, as well as more visible to people looking for the bookstore. That's debatable?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I guess, subjective. It's not inconsistent. I think there's one more image, maybe, of, yeah, that's the Higgins Group awning, an existing awning further down the building. So it's not the first awning. They are the largest tenant on the ground floor and have the biggest space, so that's what they're looking to do.
Higgins has the letters too, right?
No, Higgins just says the awning.
Oh, oh.
What was that stuff about?
I thought they had letters on it.
There's, if you go, those are other tenants.
Oh, okay.
There's a lot of other...
Oh, did you?
It does say Higgins Group on the awning.
It says Higgins Group on the awning, but that's their only sign.
Okay.
But the size of the awning complies with our code requirements.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah, personally, I think the black letters really help. I think they're more visible, but it certainly says what it needs to.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, I just had a question, not really relatable to the sign itself, which I'm in support of, but I assume it's part of the larger renovations that Fairfield is doing with the store, I've read about.
I don't know what they're doing with the store. They've, since Borders, they've taken over the store ever since Borders closed. So they're on the first floor, there's a retail bookstore, and there's a Starbucks, and then on the upper floor is an actual, you know, the university textbook place. So I'm not familiar with anything that they may have announced with respect to an interior upgrade. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Bremen?
Thank you. It seems like the intent and spirit of the regulation requiring an overall signage plan and the zone is to prevent, you know, jumbled or confusing or distracting signs that are going to diminish property values. I think that, especially since the Higgins Group has a similar awning sign with similar coloring and lettering, this is not, this sign is attractive and it's not going to pose any risks, any risk of the evils that this regulation is designed to prevent.
Can we put this to a vote? Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. See six hands, passes unanimously.
Before we go to public hearing, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to bring the commission up to date on where we are with our P O C D update and regulations. We are hoping in the next, we're hoping, we will have in the next few weeks for you a draft of the actual P O C D document for distribution. Our goal is to distribute that to you, to start that conversation. We have some mandatory referrals we need to do with the target being a public hearing sometime in early October with a November adoption. That is the goal that we are, the path we are setting forth. So stay tuned, in the next couple of weeks, we will have a, an actual draft to distribute to you. That'll start, like I said, referrals, posting, distribution, public comment period, and then ultimately, a public hearing with hopeful adoption in November. Along a parallel path, we will also have the restructured zoning regulations that we've also talked about, which is part of this. So running on a parallel path, we'll also have a completely re-packaged set of zoning regulations along the conversations that we've had with our consultant team. And then, once those two documents are ultimately vetted and hopefully adopted, we'll move on to the next phase, which is some examination of more substantive changes we might consider for the zoning regulations. So we're excited to be able to get that to you shortly for future considerations. So I just wanted to give you lead notice of, you know, over the next three months, you'll have three months or so to look at it, review, we'll refer, get comments, and then have a public hearing in October, and we'll go from there.
Commissioner Harrison?
Thanks for the update. Quick question. Do you think you'll be able to provide a red line version of the new red, just so we can kind of compare and contrast?
We will note what the changes are. The vast majority of the text is not changing. It's moving. It's re, there's going to be a more robust definition section, but yes, we will, we'll be able to highlight the changes for you.
And thank you for your work on this, really exciting.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to give you an update before, so you know what to expect and what our hopeful game plan is to get these done in the November timeframe.
Great. Thank you for that update. We'll move on to our public hearing, called 1073 North Benson Road, 86-200 Barlow Road, special exception application of Fairfield University pertaining to an addition to an existing dormitory, Faber Hall in the double A zone. Tony Fallon, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the commission, ladies and gentlemen of the public. For the record, my name is John Fallon. I'm pleased to be here representing my alma mater, Fairfield University. With me is Mr. David Razzinelli, our Vice President for Facilities, Campus, and Auxiliary Services, Catherine Hurley, our Assistant Vice President and Director of Facilities Management, Jose Hernandez, who you'll hear from momentarily of Newman Architects, and Brian Phillips of Langdon Engineering. The university does make this application for special exception and site plan approval in conjunction with its plans to construct a 118-bed addition to the existing Faber Hall residential dormitory. The addition, as you can see from the plans that were submitted, is adjacent to and connects to Faber Hall in the southern portion of the campus in the general vicinity of the QuikCenter. When I've talked to you and had the privilege of speaking to you about our, some of our previous applications over the last few years, I referenced our 2015 master plan. Wherein, we described and planned a $225 million building program, much of which was directed at enhancing the student experience through upgrades and renovations and additions to facilities, the Egan School of Nursing, the Dolan School of Business, many other renovations have raised the bar for that overall quality of student experience, and we thank you for your assistance with regard to moving these forward. We continue to seek enhancements to the student experience. We're proud of the vigorous and vital nature of Fairfield University, that we do employ over 1,300 people, and we want to maintain the highest quality of both academic excellence, student experience, and just general vibrancy. As I've also pointed out to you with regard to some of our recent applications, higher education is facing a number of very serious challenges, including declining demographics of college-bound students, as well as affordability of the traditional four-year college experience. These trends have been particularly pronounced in New England, and they do have a greater impact on smaller colleges such as Fairfield. For this reason, as I shared with you previously, Fairfield has planned for controlled growth of undergraduate enrollment to approximately 5,000 students, with current enrollment trends approximating classes of approximately 1,200 per class. This plan for modest growth of undergraduate enrollment will ensure that we remain uniquely positioned to retain our vibrancy and success as we target the market that we've always sought to address at Fairfield University. That modest growth described, as I also shared with you on prior applications, means that we need to add approximately 600 beds to address future on-campus housing needs. We plan, as I've said before, to address that through a series of internal structural upgrades, many of which have already been undertaken, and modest additions to existing rental space. We also recently received your approval of the Regis West Dormitory adjacent to Roundhill Road, which, as you can see if you go by there, is now substantially under construction and soon will be ready for occupancy. So as part of our continuing plan and commitment, we're proposing this new dormitory addition to be connected to the existing Faber Hall residential dormitory that's going to provide us with an additional 118 beds. The new addition, as shown on the architectural plans, and Jose will review those shortly with you, is obviously done in the similar architectural style of Faber Hall. The area where the Faber Hall has historically been located, where the additional place, is isolated in a very well-screened area of our campus. With regard to parking, the university currently has over 3,000 parking spaces on campus. The existing parking area serving Faber Hall has 259 spaces. In order to accommodate the proposed addition, there'll be a reduction of 18 spaces, bringing the total Faber parking to 241. The residence hall, however, as I point out in my materials, will be utilized by university stockyards who are prohibited from having vehicles on campus. So the 241 spaces as proposed will be far more than adequate in order to meet the needs of the existing residence hall with the proposed addition. In addition, the parking area immediately adjacent servicing the QuikCenter is generally available, except during special event times to supplement available parking in this area of campus. Technically, we did have a code enforcement review meeting on June 6. We have complied with all requests and suggestions with regard to the code minutes. We've also obtained a certificate of wetlands performance. That has been published and approved by the Inland Wetlands Conservation Department. We've worked closely with the engineering department. We received the final engineering approval, I believe you received through Mr. Wend, an email from Mr. Santiago today, but he has confirmed all aspects of our drainage report. Mr. Phillips, Brian Phillips of Langdon Engineering is here, should you have any questions related to the site drainage. We only, we did our normal outreach with regard to neighbors. Obviously, you did your notice with regard to that. The only letter that we received was the same one you received from Ms. Lulice Lockhart, referencing certain things that she would like to see the university address with regard to, I won't read the letter, you probably have it. We have done that. Three of the four items that she referenced in her removal of vegetation and other aspects have been done. The only thing we are working on and awaiting on, she also mentioned pruning certain bushes that intersect utility lines, and that we have to go through U I for, and we are in the process of doing that. Pursuant to Section 28.6A, the regulations, the site plan is proposed and shows the locations for bicycle racks, as you require. Further pursuant to Section 25.2.2.9, we are for both promoting and providing safe and efficient ingress and egress in circulation for bicycle and pedestrian traffic by providing direct and convenient circulation between all main buildings. So at this point in time, I'd like to call on Jose Hernandez of Newman Architects, and he'll brief you, walk you through our architectural plans and the site plan. Jose?
Good evening. Good evening, I'm Jose Hernandez, I'm a principal with Newman Architects. I'm the project designer, and it's a pleasure to be back for this mission.
Sorry, it's taking a little bit of time to load it.
No, that's fine, I'm not. The project is an expansion of, well, I forgot where it was. The project is a 32,000 square foot, three floors, each about 10,100 square feet or less, with the lowest floor sunk into the slope on the image that's on the screen now. The intent is to connect the two buildings and give them, perfect. So in blue is a proposed Faber North, and green is the existing Faber. And the arrow on the left shows the direction that the image is taken from. The buildings are about 40 feet from each other at their closest, and they are about 47 feet away at the furthest point. We tried to create a plan that was very efficient. The plan is primarily doubles, with two bathrooms on either side of the wing. We have singles on the end, and to maintain the efficiency, we have stacked the program. So all of our bathrooms are one over the other, all trash rooms are one over the other. So it's quite an efficient plan, and that's intentional to work at a very constrained We are accessing the building, we're providing accessibility, I'm not sure if you'll be able to tell, but just to the north of the blue plan, there is a yellow highlighted sidewalk, and that sidewalk provides us a pitch where we can provide accessibility into new Faber North. Connecting the two buildings is a... Connecting the two buildings is a new pedestrian way, and that pedestrian way, so, Emily, I need to-
I'm trying to get there, it's just taking a little bit of time to load it.
That's technology. So the new pedestrian way connects at the second level of new and existing, and to-
Do you want this one or the floor plan?
Actually, if you could show the rendering that shows the pedestrian way, I think that probably more telling. Thank you. So connecting the two is a pedestrian way, and again, we tried to stay within the material vernacular of the existing and picked up on the new language of the architecture. Interesting notes are that to get the accessibility to work on that sidewalk, we had to raise the elevation of the new slightly to be able to get inaccessible means from new to existing, and our plan was successful in getting that to work out as well. As I indicated, we tried to borrow materials from the existing and picked them up in our new palette of finishes. The architecture is very quiet. The materials are a stone base, that's a posed stone base, and picking up from what's on existing, it is semiticus plank that is colored in the factory, and it's kind of this beige color that is projected on the image. If you could go to the third slide. From the north, thank you, from the north, you can see how pushing the building down into that slope keeps this elevation somewhat low and subdued. I think from the parking lot to the top of that parapet is right at 22 feet, and again, we tried to keep it as simple in keeping with the materials of existing. In a nutshell, that's the architecture. Thank you, Jose.
Any questions for the architect, Commissioner Bronn?
I'm just trying to envision this. Where's the Quick Center on all these areas? Is it on the other side of that large, sort of rounded parking lot?
If you go to the plan, Emily.
Lot of data, so it's gonna take us a little-
Can I have this other hand?
Yes.
Okay, this is better.
So right now, so this-
So if you're looking at that plan, and you walk out to the north-
Towards-
To the northwest, actually.
Is that towards Roundhill or on them?
More or less.
Okay.
So the parking lot is just to the north, and the Quick Center is kind of to the northwest.
So right now, this is sort of like an angled building that's kind of long and narrow, and it's behind it on the North Benson side that has its own parking lot? And then this building will be, this new building will be between the old building and the Quick Center parking lot?
That's correct.
And there's like a strip of greenery between them now, and that's where that will be, right there?
That's correct.
And in terms of, somewhere I read that the porous pavement that they're using for one of the, which parking lot is increasing in the porous pavement?
The parking lot, we went back to Inland Wetlands, we got our certificate of wetlands performance-
You got that, okay.
We did.
I saw a copy of it unsigned.
Yeah, and as part of that, we also, let's bring it up. In 2010, when the original Quick Center parking lot was built, there was a stormwater detention easement that was filed on the land records, and that was done as part of an Inland Wetlands permit application, a condition of approval. In conjunction with this proposal for the addition to Faber Hall pursuant to the new certificate of wetlands performance, which happens to be WP-23069, 2,100 square feet of porous parking area, as referenced in the original stormwater detention easement, is going to be eliminated. However, compensating for this loss, the plans associated with Faber Hall, which is what's before you tonight, will provide for the construction of approximately 5,300 square feet of porous pavement. So although we are losing 2,100 square feet originally of porous pavement, that'll be compensated plus with the addition of 5,300 square feet of porous pavement. We went back to the Conservation Commission, and they approved this on June 13th. So we have revised the stormwater detention easement, there'll be a new map, we'll show it, but at the end of the day, in this general vicinity of the campus, the stormwater, the porous pavement will be increased by over 3,200 square feet.
Does that mean that, which parking lot are we talking about? The one sort of on the North Benson side of the job?
Yeah, the original, the parking lot that was part of the Quick Center.
Oh, on the Quick Center side?
Yeah, because this was in 2010.
But that's not the parking lot for this building?
No, but in order to increase the parking for this building, we needed to eliminate 2,100 square feet of the previously approved pervious pavement.
The Quick Center parking lot.
Right, but working with Conservation Staff and ultimately the Conservation Commission, what we are doing instead is we are enhancing water quality by adding a total of 5,300 square feet of pervious pavement. So the amount of pervious pavement, pavement as a result of this project, will actually be increased by about 3,200 square feet.
I misunderstood your narrative. I thought you were increasing the size of the parking lot.
No, 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 not in, not in the area of-
You're converting impervious to porous pavement?
We're adding, porous pavement as originally approved for the Quick Lot required porous pavement, I don't know how much, but to accommodate this construction, we're eliminating 2,100 square feet of porous pavement. However, as part of this construction, we are adding 5,300 square feet of porous pavement.
In place of what?
Just to compensate both-
I mean, where are you adding it? Grass or what's there now?
It's-
I'm trying to figure out if you're converting impervious to porous, or if you're converting grass to porous pavement.
I'll let Brian, who'll do a better job, I think, than I am.
It's kind of a tongue twister, too.
Brian Phillips of Langton will get the question.
Before we, before we go on, do we have any questions for the architect here?
Yes.
Can we just do that? Can we finish up with the architect?
Yeah.
Commissioner Bronn, then.
So just, so this building then is really a new building, it's a separate building being connected with a skywalk or something, right? Is there a connection on the ground also?
There is a paved walk that connects it to the ground floor.
And it looks as though it's three stories, but part of, part of the ground, the first floor is going to be underground, below grade, right?
The back half of the lowest level is in the hill.
Will there be a window? I mean, do people-
No, it's all back-up house program.
What does that mean?
It's like storage rooms-
Oh, no dorm rooms that have no window, obviously. Okay.
Commissioner Bronn?
Thank you. How does the addition compare in height to the existing Faber Hall, and will it be visible, you know, past the bulk or the mass of Faber Hall?
The existing, the new will be eight feet, two inches parapet above the parapet of existing. If you're in the parking lot, and you look at the new building, it's, that is 22 feet.
Okay, so it's 22 feet taller as you're looking at it from the, from the parking lot?
If you're in the parking lot, and you're 5'8", and you're 5'8", and you look at the parapet, yes, you're looking up 22 feet.
And what's between the new massing of, you know, the addition, the proposed new massing, and, you know, how's it, it's along Barlow Road, for example?
From Barlow Road, you will not see it. We did our section test, and because we're 40 feet away at the closest distance, your existing Faber will screen proposed Faber.
And what's in between the existing Faber Hall and Barlow Road? Is that landscaping as well, or, you know, trees?
It, in the summer, this time of year, it's fairly green and almost impossible to see through it.
Deciduous trees.
Yes.
Anything, Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, I have a few questions. The first one may be more appropriate for Mr. Fallon, if that's okay?
Well, no, I-
Sorry. Sorry, I'm just going through the questions I wrote down. You mentioned in your opening remarks that demographics, enrollment are down, so why the need for an additional bed?
No, what I, what I said was demographics, the demographics have made enrollment more challenging-
Right.
So that universities wishing to maintain their vibrancy and competitiveness want to make sure that we have enrollment that based upon our goals and aspirations fits those goals. And 5,000 is the number that we're looking at, 4,800 would be optimal, 1,200 per class. So I didn't mean to say that enrollment's down. Fairfield University, not to sound like a cheerleader, but had its most dramatically successful year in terms of the number of applicants as opposed to acceptance.
Yeah.
We're maintaining a very healthy enrollment demand, but we want to make sure that in terms of the economics, especially if they affect a smaller New England college, we have suitable and sufficient enrollment to maintain our financial stability.
Yeah, and just to clarify, I didn't think that you said Fairfield U is down, those were national stats, I gathered, so I just wanted to clarify. Code review, now, I think maybe it's more for Mr. Went, now, as I understand, there are two lots to be merged?
Correct.
Okay.
I should have mentioned that, and Mr. Went can, they're-
Let me just finish, if you can get online, sorry. I guess, how would this affect lot coverage for the university in a double A zone?
It won't, because even though there's separate tax parcel, the coverage numbers have always been calculated for the university based upon the different tax parcels. So that the merger, the only reason we'd want to merge these parcels is because technically we wouldn't want to have a building straddling two tax parcels, so it'll have no impact whatsoever on the coverage or FAR aspects of things.
And has that, that merging has not taken place yet?
No, if you approve the application, that'll be a condition of approval.
Okay. And then, in the code review minutes, you also mentioned there were issues with the lighting plan, has that been addressed?
Yes, the lighting plan has been addressed. There were also comments, I think, in the code about potential changes to the building code as far as dealing with that Mr. Hernandez had referenced, and that never occurred. So everything that was referenced in the code has been, has been addressed.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for the architect? Commissioner Francis?
Mr. Fallon, can you get this filled out? This may be in older form, but I didn't have the dimensions of the new building filled out on the floor.
Okay.
And we can certainly give it to you.
Thank you.
The architect and Commissioner Bronn?
Yeah, I have a question. The plan, it, we don't get hard copies unless we request them, so I couldn't read the lighting plan, but I know we have all kinds of provisions for, you know, dark skies and all that. Were you able to, is the lighting plan that's in this set that we got, is that the one that's easier to read, that?
We had submitted a lighting plan, in terms of, that had the lumens on the down, but it was too small, so when it, at the code comment was, can you-
So the plan now, they take care of that?
And, and every one of the fixtures we're calling out for is a total dark sky fixture, with the exception of the campus standard, which has a slight amount of-
Okay. And the same thing with the other one, he was talking about the, because I was looking over the plans now that Commissioner Francis brought, it does look like, on the, facing North Benson, is that what, I think it said east side elevation, it looked like the whole first floor is below grade, but it has like windows, but that's not-
Well, no, it's, so on the ground floor, because, because it's pitched, we're going to stick the building in so it essentially is doing this, so if, well, I'm trying to-
That's a pretty steep pitch right there.
So if this were the building, and you're looking at the section, and the hill is doing this-
Okay.
This one we love, it's open to the courtyard they're working to create, is where the rooms are located.
Okay.
On this backside is that back-up house program that-
So it's all, it's on the length of it, not the, and the whole length of it is going to be below grade on the back facing South Benson, North Benson?
And we-
And the other whole side is a line of dorm rooms?
That's correct.
So you can't have as many dorm rooms on the first floor as on the other floor?
We don't.
Oh, okay, okay. And then the height that they were mentioning, that Attorney Fallon mentioned, that they did not change our code to make it a higher basement? But is that really a basement if the rooms are not below grade?
Well, the issue was, it was a health department issue, and the health department's language was something more or less that you had to have a minimum amount of 8'6".
Pardon me? Eight feet six?
Eight six, yeah, eight feet six inches. However, Connecticut did not adopt that part of the code.
But you have eight feet six inches, don't you?
We do, but we're down at eight feet in some locations, and as high as nine feet in other locations.
And where the first floor dorm rooms are, or in, oh, okay, so-
And, and-
So some of the dorm rooms are eight feet, not eight feet six inches? I didn't look at every room, yeah.
And that would comply with the code.
Okay.
Yes, the code, yes, excuse me, for the record, John Fallon, the code comment under Health, Melissa Starcelli, she was just saying, hey, you know, they might change the code, and if they did, you should be aware of that. But then, we did follow up on that with Melissa, and they didn't, so the plan is compliant with the, with the-
And then, just one final question about the engineering comments. I couldn't find them in the master package or the, or an email, and I find it hard to scroll through this, but were there engineering comments? Because they weren't on the, on the code review, and what were their comments, and how was that addressed?
Ryan addressed that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Questions for the architect, or can we, I think we're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Emily?
Yep, bring us that previous plan.
No, I'm just, thank you for scrolling through them. I'll leave it up to you as to whether you want to do your presentation, or address at least the two comments, however you want.
I don't have a specific presentation.
Okay, so jump right in, then.
So Brian Phillips, with Langton Engineering, to address the first comment about porous pavement. So essentially, we, you know, just to kind of give some reference, we have existing Faber, there's a slope of grass, it's, you know, currently where the building will sit, and then the Quick Lot, which is at a higher elevation, sort of north.
Brian, sorry, I forget your name, but this is-
Oh, yes. So where you see sort of the hatched lines of, you know, the hatch above the proposed Faber, that's where the porous pavement is going to go. What is underneath that now is an exist, you know, partially existing pavement and some grass. So we are taking away some porous pavement in the parking lot, but providing it back with a net increase of 3,200 square feet.
You're taking away some impervious surface and making it porous?
Correct.
And you're taking away some grass and making it porous pavement?
Correct.
And the net result, not the net profit, and the result of that is, the pervious pavement in the area will increase by 3,200 square feet, because we're disturbing, if you will, 2,100 square feet of porous pavement as part of this construction, but we're adding 5,300 square feet of porous pavement as part of this construction.
Essentially, there's a parking lot there now, we're putting in a parking lot, we're adding more porous pavement.
So you're, you're at, so it says there's going to be a net loss of 18 parking spaces, but that's on the other side where the dorm, no, 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 that's on this side.
That's on the north side.
So you're taking up Quick Center parking spaces for the new building?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Because of the building, we needed to push the limits slightly of the parking lot in, so we lost a little bit of that lot.
And is there any issue with not having enough parking because, because you're adding 118 beds, right?
Yes.
And they're not using, and you're removing 18 spaces, so is there overflow parking that's going to be a problem?
The dorm is restricted to sophomores, and therefore they cannot have cars, so none of the, none of the-
The new dorm, the old dorm is-
No, Faber, the Faber is-
And he uses the spaces now, it's not?
But it is restricted to sophomores, number one. Number two, we'll still have 249 spaces, we're only losing 18 spaces. And as far as overflow, which we haven't needed, but to the extent- We're only losing 18 spaces. And as far as overflow, which we haven't needed, but to the extent the quick lot is generally available, except those evenings or whatever where there might be events. So the combination of the fact that the dorm is restricted to sophomores, that the dorm is only losing 18 spaces, 249 from 250, 241 from 259, and the proximity of the quick lot, we're not at all concerned about parking.
Who uses spaces now if it's not anyone in the favorite dorm? Who uses the 200, whatever, 59?
Yeah, I mean, this-
I mean, somebody, it must be needed for some purpose, like, and also is there staff or any other, you know, other support things and delivery and whatnot?
Good evening, for the record, David Frost, an ally on the vice president for facilities, campus and elementary services. Fairfield University looks at parking as a whole for the entire student body over the entire campus. So originally, the quick center lot, when the quick center was built, was much smaller. And then this lot, quick center lot, was expanded in 2010.
2010.
As much as we allow juniors and seniors to have cars, in many respects, we want to discourage them from driving from one end of the campus to the other. So the front part of the quick center lot is dedicated to the quick center and their events. The deeper part of the lot is for, currently, for student parking, but it's not necessarily students that live in that area. You know, for example, Regis West, Bowman Hall, the parking lot's over on that end of the campus. That entire end of campus is freshmen and sophomore, but you'll have juniors and seniors parking there from the other side of campus. So they have to walk to their cars.
So right now, you don't anticipate any extra student parking being needed, being needed for this addition? Because it wasn't used for the old favor, it's not used for the favor. You are losing 18, but you're not adding enough employment or staff or things to make a difference in it?
Correct.
Okay, that, that helps explain it. Thank you.
And are you good with the forest pavement?
Yeah, I mean, so it satisfies the conservation requirement to get, and the easement that was dealt with.
Before Mr. Presidentelli steps down, I'll make it-
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine, we'll go around the same guy. Is there an operational parking plan for, you know, large, like world-class events at the quick center? Or, you know, major university events in terms of, you know, maybe simultaneous demand for parking in Favor Hall and the quick center? Because, you know, there was a mention of, well, you know, Favor Hall could use quick center spaces for overflow, but of course, the quick center sometimes has, has very heavy parking demand for, for events.
We typically do our best to coordinate the different events. As you might imagine, you can have the quick center, you can have the Mahoney Arena, you can have Fairfield Prep. So internally, we do our best to coordinate so those events are not all happening at the same time. For example, most of the events, the major events in the Mahoney Arena would happen at a time when the prep school kids are gone, so that we then capture that lot. So again, we look holistically. Typically, we bring in outsourced company to direct traffic and that kind of stuff. So a bigger event at the quick center, we will also use the prep lot, us people over from one end of the campus to the other.
Thank you. Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, thank you. How do you enforce sophomores from not parking there? Do they have to have a decal, like?
We have a parking program where every car has to be registered with a decal. And they simply, you know, if we see a car that does not have a decal on campus, it gets ticketed and ultimately will get towed.
Commissioner Francis?
Are the prep students allowed to park in any of your lots?
The prep students are limited to the prep lots. And in fact, they're on the lots immediately adjacent to the prep school, what they call the senior lot, because when you're senior, you get priority. The lower lot, which is now next to Roward Field, but a lot of the prep students park up on the north end of campus, up near John C. Dolan Hall, up near the Noviciate, the former Noviciate.
Commissioner Braun?
Trees. I don't know who to ask about trees. How many trees are being cut and how many trees are being added?
There are a few trees being cut down in the quick lot adjacent to the parking spaces. We are providing four trees per those, only regulation is one percent.
Are we cutting more than we're adding? Sounds like it's around equal.
I believe it's, it's about, it's about equal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, right. No, just a quick move on your question about engineering comments. We received three comments.
Okay.
Two of them were technical related to the drainage report, and one was just regarding a detail on our yard drains.
You can just a quick summary of the questions and answers?
Sure, yeah. The, one of the comments was, they wanted us to show that we are reducing our peak flows of stormwater from the post-development 10-year storm down to the pre-development 2-year storm, which we are, using, you know, detention and the forest pavement. They wanted to, us to provide the filtration rate that we're using for the forest pavement, you know, how fast the water infiltrates into the ground. So we provided that. And also, they wanted the catch spaces in the yard drains to have a minimum 18-inch sump. So below the pipes, you know, it's kind of a dead storage there to collect sediment. And we did revise our detail, responded to all the comments we received.
And the easement that's mentioned in the code review minutes, does that actually go for a separate conservation approval, or is that part of the certificate of conformance?
As part of the certificate of Williams' conformance, we went back to the conservation commission, seated at the conservation commission to get their approval for the modification of the original detention easement that was put on the land records 10 years ago. And the only modification was the additional pervious pavement area.
Okay. And reduction of some of the grass?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else before I let these gentlemen return to their seats? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for this.
Thank you.
So that's really our presentation. The university appreciates the commission's careful consideration and support of all of its applications, especially those we've had before you recently, like this one, for modest increases in our on-campus student housing. The new residence hall that is before you tonight has been, I think, as Jose's presentation indicates, tentatively architecturally designed to ensure that it will be attractive, unobtrusive, and harmonizes with the existing Favor Hall. And it will provide us the additional student housing that we need, consistent with our carefully planned growth of undergraduate enrollment, designed to ensure that we'll continue to thrive and prosper, and to maintain and even grow upon our growing reputation for excellence, which obviously benefits us as a university, those who've been happy enough to graduate from it, and also the town of Fairfield, which is blessed by having two excellent universities thriving in this community. And that has a very important, I think, positive impact on making our town the uniquely wonderful place it is. So we thank you. Be happy to answer any questions you remember to the public might have. Appreciate it.
Any final questions from the commission? At least for the initial presentation? Okay. Thank you, Attorney Fallon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, and the initial presentation of this application, I'll open it up to public comment. I'll ask in the room, does anybody, member of the public wish to be heard on this application? If so, please come on up to the front here. I'll start with people, members of the public in person, and then I'll open it up to anybody who's joining us remotely or by phone. If you can, please just give us your name and your address. Keep your comments remain to the issue or the application. Excuse me. That should be it.
Hi.
Hi, good evening.
I'm Brenda Contagno. I am a resident on 305 Barlow Road. And this was a very good meeting. It had a lot of the questions that I asked, and so, thank you very much. Some of the things that I am concerned about, or I have a question about, I should say, is, as Attorney Fallon had indicated, they want to add, the university would like to add 600 more beds. So between this and Regis, where will that put them?
He's writing it down. So you ask the questions to us, and we're, the idea is, the expectation is, he would answer them in his rebuttal time.
Okay, thank you so much.
So feel free.
And then, does this drain onto Barlow Road? Because some-
Does it drain onto Barlow Road?
There is some flooding issues on Barlow Road.
I see him writing them down. If he doesn't answer, we'll ask them.
Um, let's see, I think that might be it.
Okay. No worries, take your time.
Is there a view of the new height from, you're looking at the current favor? Is there a view of the favor behind it? Like, how much? I know you said it would be higher. And that's it.
Okay. Can you see Favor Hall from where you, where you are in front of your house?
I cannot.
Okay.
And it's also, it's very well shielded right now.
Yeah, I think that was-
We were having this conversation in December.
I think they had said it's eight, was it eight feet?
Higher.
Or is it 22 feet?
Well, that's on the other side.
That's an advantage point, I guess.
Yeah, they'll clarify it, but I think that the architect said you weren't going to be able to see it. Sounds like you can't see Favor Hall at all, but I'll let them clarify it on their rebuttal. Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Harrison?
Hey, I have a question. Can you describe some of the flooding issues that you talked about? When does it happen? How long has it been happening?
Well, it's, um, that's a great question. So we are a little bit further, farther down the road. And it happens during intense rainstorm. And it may not be affecting that side of Barlow, but I'm passing if it's going to be draining into Barlow because several homes have incurred quite a bit of damage and properties have gotten flooded. And this started, well, I hate to really say this, but after the Phil's was done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's somebody else? Did you?
She's my wife, she covered it.
Okay. Any other members of the public here in person that wish to be heard on this application, 1073 North Benson Road? Not seeing anybody else. Is there anybody who's joining us remotely that wishes to be heard on this application, 1073 North Benson Road?
We have Betsy Lockhart, who's requested to speak.
Thank you. Ms. Lockhart, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. If you can just give us your address, and the floor is yours.
Sure, Betsy Lockhart, and I am at 115 Barlow. I'm on the corner of Noyes. So I am directly across from the old driveway for Favor Hall, just for perspective. That was closed off a number of years ago, and catty corner to the entrance, the Barlow Road entrance for the university. So, so I was one who had submitted a letter last month, appreciate passing that around, and appreciate the Fairfield University team taking a look at it and checking the box on a few of those things. I do, I, I do have a few, a bunch of things, because when I wrote the letter was before we actually got the proposal. So this was just based on the university's letter of what I had sent. One of the things that, at my, I know that there's flooding, my neighbor who just spoke, that they kind of had flooding down at that end of Barlow. Our end of Barlow is all about trees and power outages. So the, the transformer that is right on the sidewalk where the, where's the green space, we've had issues with that in the past, and that's not a, necessarily, we don't know the source, but years back, a bunch of us had a significant power surge on a sunny day, and thousands and thousands of dollars of damage to each of our homes, having to replace electrical, you know, all sorts of things. So at that point, was when I had asked the tree warden, who asked the university, and I had called UI as well, because there were a lot of dead trees. So appreciate, you know, the university took care of it at that point, left the logs. I appreciate that the team has now gone in and taken those logs. That was maybe back in 2019, so now 23, that those logs have kind of been, that they've been removed. I really appreciate that. But there's a lot of dead branches that continue to fall. So I know that they said that there were some, there's some brush, and they need to talk to United Illuminating about it. I'm really asking for a commitment from the university to maintain that, because I hate being the tree police. You know, I, I just don't want to keep, when, you know, we've had other outages where limb falls, and, you know, contents of our fridge go. There's just a lot that's, you know, I don't want this to be just check the box to get approval. So i- is there a way that, you know, that just the maintenance? And they removed the brush, they came through, I've been out of town, I just got home today, that they went through with the weed cutter and cut some things there. They probably did more, I didn't get to see it. But, you know, they left the wife's chips bag, it's still sitting there. So I'm not sure if the team that's presenting has kind of looked through, if they took a walk down the sidewalk to see, hey, is this up to the standards of what the university property looks like? You know, they filled in, there was, there's, for years, many years, there's been broken bluestone from an old project. They poured some concrete in. If that's, you know, I guess if, if that's what they're looking to do, if that's kind of the bare minimum, if that's what it's going to be, I guess that's, that is what it is. But I, I'm hoping that there'll be continued maintenance, just so that the neighborhood who uses that sidewalk and live here and need power, you know, want to have their power every day. So, so sorry to be long-winded on that. So the other thing, so I'm just kind of curious on, so I did take a walk around to see where they're going to be doing work. Anyone who has been at the university when they're doing work knows that there are a lot of excavation and blasting that goes on, a lot of dump trucks, all of those things. So I was curious is, do they expect to do a lot of excavation, knowing that we've got ledge? Like, is there, has that been kind of part of the plan?
I see them, oh, I'm sorry. They're writing it down, so we'll make sure we ask that question.
Yeah, so that, just for the, just so we know, I mean, you know, when they did the business school, there was definitely a lot of blasting and kind of what that schedule looks like. Because at this point, you know, this will be that much closer to the homes on, on Barlow, just so we're kind of aware of it. And then, you know, the construction equip, you know, the timing of when it's going to happen, you know, the construction, the dallying construction trucks, which I'm sure that team is very familiar with, coming through and using the Barlow entrance, you know, 20, 30 times a day when they're doing that kind of work. So just, it would be helpful for us to know what, what that timeline is going to look like for noise within the neighborhood. And then, lastly, and this is probably not, you know, this is more of a longer-term issue. The, the streets of St. Mark's and Noyes, when you say that sophomores don't have parking, it does become, and public safety's been good about it, but we do get the students who want to drive to school, and they'll park on our side streets. So that's always on us to then call, say, hey, someone's at the end of my driveway. So if there's just that plan, if there's going to be 118 more students who can't park, just to kind of keep that in mind of managing students who are bringing their, their cars and parking in the neighborhoods. So, yeah, so if, if the university team could take a look at the, that wooded space, and, you know, if that's, that's kind of my big thing, is, I, again, I don't want to be the tree police, but I don't want to lose my power because of broke, of dead limbs. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have Tina Serbun.
Mr. and Mrs. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I'm virtual. Um, I'm Tina Serbun. I live at 608 North Benson Road. Um, I just wanted, you know, a question out to everyone was, um, you were talking about the flooding. So when there is substantial rain, the, uh, bush and yard in front of, uh, St. Robert's Hall, I think it's called, becomes a pond. And, um, we've lived here about nine years and, you know, that happens probably a couple times a year, maybe three or four. Only maybe five or six of those times has it breached upon, like, North Benson Road. I'm just curious if we could address that and how this will affect it. Because between this and now, honestly, it's been a little bit of concern of mine watching the turf field go in. That turned it from a, I'm sure there's probably drainage, but if you guys could just explain that specifically, you know, um, when that, because it does, it turns into a, a full-out lake, like a huge amount of, when you ask about flooding. Um, my other quick question was, is there a place I really, I just couldn't see where the roads were? Is this structure going to be between the current structure and North Benson? Or is it where, um, St. Robert's Hall is? Or is it going to be between the current structure and the street that is on, um, like, on campus? Those were just the questions we had.
Thank you. Anything else?
Oh, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Was that all we had signed up?
I don't have anybody else signed up, if you want to do a last call.
I shall. Uh, is there anybody else joining us, either in person, remotely, or by phone, that wishes to be heard on this application? If you're joining by phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. Last call, any member of the public wish to be heard on this application? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and turn it back over to Attorney Fallon for rebuttal.
I have my notes, not rebuttal, but answering questions.
That's fair.
So I'll, I'll just start with Mrs. Lockhart, that's where some of my notes were. As I said in my presentation, we did receive her letter. Ms. Hurley, our Assistant Vice President, has been following up on all of those items. Uh, I think Ms. Lockhart kind of indicated that, that the only two things that we have to keep in mind is, number one, as I said, we are contacting UI. A lot of the, some of the trimming that I think Ms. Lockhart referred to does require coordination permission from UI, because it's in the area of wires. The other thing that we did do, we, we're trying to work with Conservation Department, because some of the areas of growth are in protected conservation easement area. So we have to be careful about what we can and can't do there. But we certainly reaffirm our commitment to Ms. Lockhart. Uh, Ms. Hurley is, who's here tonight, is very much involved in addressing all the points that she raises in her letter, uh, with regard to the, the trees and the pruning issues. And we'll continue to do that. Uh, our geotech, uh, information indicates that we will not have to do any blasting here, that the rock will not require blasting to be excavated. Certainly, we're a field condition to change that. Uh, we don't anticipate that, but if it did, you know, we would contact the Fire Marshal, the Building Department, and no blasting would be done without following the appropriate protocols. But we do not anticipate that.
Do you anticipate excavation?
We will have some excavation, yes, but it will not require blasting to affect. And basically, it, the, um, the calculations are such that basically it's gonna be about a net situation. So we won't be, this will not be a situation where we're hauling truckloads of, um, uh, material off of the campus. We, we, we're pretty much in a net situation there. With regard to parking, we are, this is an issue, I've been representing the university for 30 years. And there was a time, 30 years ago, where I sat here, and this was more in terms of college place people, and, and we said, well, you know, we can't do anything, we're not the police. Well, those days have changed. So we will enforce, uh, the restrictions on street parking. We get a requi- a complaint, uh, from anyone relative to parking. We don't believe respectfully, that's been a huge problem in Ms. Lockhart's neighborhood. But, you know, if there is any, uh, parking of that kind, you know, sophomores or whatever, let us know and we will address it.
Should they direct it to Ms. Hurley or to somebody else?
Good question? Public safety.
Okay.
Just public safety. But we have, we, we will do that, we've been careful doing that. And we think basically, because we have done that, um, we haven't had the kind of problems we had 15 years ago. No, thank God, we've been, we'll run on the commission, that will, be a long haul. But I think things are much better. Uh, some other questions. As far as how we're addressing this approximately 600 beds. Uh, this application has 118 beds. You were good enough to approve Regis Hall, the addition, the new Regis West, that's 165 beds. You approved two additional townhouses, which are now up and I think really beautiful, fit right in. 84 beds. We did an internal renovation to Dolan Hall, 22 beds. So that's 389. So we're getting closer to our goal. We, we haven't made any final decisions with regard to where the rest of those beds will come from. But to the extent those beds will require any, you know, modification of use and/or new construction, we will come back to see you and we have to provide you, um, that information then. Um, the cross-sections are in your plans. I, i- it's so that somebody, if somebody, I think they, they wanted to see the cross-sections. I don't know if we can put those up without driving Emeline crazy, but they are in the plan. And, and they do confirm what...
Is that it, Jose?
No, it is a cross-section through the bridge and...
Through the bridge, okay. Is it on this sheet or a different sheet?
Uh, you're tacking the memory.
I think it's below.
On the next sheet or is it, I go over?
Right there, on the upper left.
Upper left?
I'm sorry, yes, upper left.
That way?
Yes.
Okay.
So what you're seeing on the left, that vertical, uh, bar is the height of the proposed building. On the right is that small piece is the height of the existing building. And when you stretch that out to the road, the sideline, you, we, we did some studies and those studies revealed that you can see virtually no part of that, because you'd have to be up. If you're on, um, Barlow, you'd have to be under the roof, I guess, to be able to see it. But we do have studies and we can provide it to Attorney Fallon.
It's about how lo- how far in campus from Barlow Road is the existing Favor Hall?
So they could just move closer to the line?
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess what I would ask you to do, Emeline, is go to a site plan?
Yeah, why don't you go to the site plan? Because, uh, um, Ms. Serena, I, I hope I, because she had a question in terms of, I just want to go over again exactly where the, the addition is situated between, you know, where and where. So maybe just the basic site plan.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
Uh, does the lighting plan work?
Uh, it, it could, it's for the relative position.
What we have the site plan, even, I could, I could scale it. Uh, actually, I, if, those are the plan, uh, yeah, I mean, to, if we have a, a plan set, we could just...
Oh, this one? Sorry.
Yeah, no, I don't know, yeah.
That looks right.
That looks right.
Yes, all the way down there.
You got the...
It's proposed.
I just did a quick scaling. Yeah, somebody whispered in my ear. It's approximately 300 feet. The question was from Commissioner Remen, okay, correct? How, was it your question?
Uh, member of the public or...
Member of the public, I apologize. But how far was the existing Favor Hall from Barlow Road? And the answer is approximately 300 feet. And to the individual, the last lady who spoke, if you look what's mounted up on the site now, you can see the location of the, the new addition, uh, in terms of where it's, it's located relative to the existing campus and, um...
Which is between the old Favor and the Quick Center.
Correct. It is not closer to...
More inland.
Correct.
Inland.
It's not closer to North Benson. The last thing I want to do is call on Brian. I mean, we...
The drainage?
To talk about drainage, thank you. First of all, I preface it by saying, we don't have a flooding, I'm not saying the neighbors don't maybe have flooding issues, but we're not causing or exacerbating any flooding issues on campus. We do have, after a thorough review, the approval of the Engineering Department and the Conservation Department. Having said that, I'd ask Brian to address any questions with regard to any impact of this project relative to Barlow Road existing conditions and/or there was a comment or a question with regard to occasional periodic, wherever flooding in the corner area of the campus at the corner of Barlow Road and North Benson. So if you could address those things.
Thank you. Yes, again, Brian Phillips. Brian Phillips with Langton Engineering. Um, so as a part of this project, we are providing additionally, um, approximately 7,500 cubic feet of stormwater storage through both underground detention, so underground concrete chambers, which hold stormwater, as well as the additional course pavement that will happen to Quiglot. Um, so in, for all storms analyzed from the two-year to the 100-year, we are reducing peak flows by approximately 15 to 30% from existing to proposed conditions. And as noted in engineering, one of the engineering comments, we are bringing the post-development 10-year storm peak flow down to the two-year pre-development, so a reduction.
So what you're saying is this project and the drainage that comes with it will improve any drainage situations or over...
We, we are abusing peak flows from our site for all storms analyzed through the underground detention and course payment.
Do you expect that that, assuming there's an, let's just say there's an issue, neighbors have said there's an issue on Barlow Road, do you expect that that will help? If, run, runoff to Barlow Road?
It will certainly help. You know, we're talking about a very large watershed, of which we are a very small part of. So in terms of our piece of the overall watershed, we are reducing by approximately 20%.
Okay. Commissioner Bronn?
The, the main complaint about flooding, aside from the one on North Benson, which was Robert Hall House, that's separate, but seemed to be down where the Ball Field is, which is on the corner of Round Hill and Barlow, which is kind of like the southwest portion. Is that kind of impacted by this in any way? Like, that seems pretty far away, actually, from this. But, um, you know, because you have that, there's a, the access road is in between and, um, some other things. But, um, if, I've heard about the Ball Field having created flooding problems before.
That's a separate watershed.
Oh, separate water shed? Or watershed?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, as far as you zoom out, you know, you can get into the larger watershed.
Does that drain in a different direction than this area?
Our site does not drain in that direction.
Oh, that's interesting.
Towards the Barlow, Round Hill Road intersection. We drain towards the Barlow, North Benson intersection.
Oh, that's interesting. Thank you.
Plus, we have, over the years, made significant enhancements just with the record, you know, visiting the affected application.
Penetrates everything, right?
To the, to the drains.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, similar to that. Commissioner Francis?
Someone asked about the trucks, if they'll be using the Barlow Road entrance? Are you making a special entrance?
We don't anticipate a lot of exterior removal, but to the extent that we will have some construction traffic uh, with a project of this type, we would like to use the Barlow gate. We think it's efficient, we think it's safer, uh, than, you know, necessarily, you know, we, we may also very well use the, the Playhouse North Benson, North Benson Road gate, but we'd like to maintain the flexibility to use that gate.
Close.
Any other final questions? Final comments from you, Attorney Fallon?
We thank you for your patience. We think it's a great application. We hope you will agree. We'll keep finding a way to make this university as a special place so that it is for the town, okay?
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. Thank you to your team. I'll close the hearing on this application. Next item is 1899 Bronson Road. Special permit application of 1899 Bronson Road LLC pertaining to a three-story addition for first-floor commercial use in a single apartment and a single apartment on the upper floors in the Neighborhood Design Business District. Attorney Fitzpatrick, good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Phillips Patrick. I'm an attorney in Fairfield with a law firm of Russo and Rizio. With office at the 10 Sasco Hill Road. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, 1899 Bronson Road LLC. The owner of the property. The principal of 1899 Bronson Road LLC is William Kenny. Bill Kenny and his wife Jennifer are here with me tonight. Bill Kenny purchased the property on Fairfield County Savings Bank in the year 2020. This property is located in a commercial district, the Neighborhood Design Business District. Neighborhood Design Business District regulations, specifically Section 12.5.5, permits a mixed business residential use in this zone, provided the residential use does not exceed 50% of the total floor area. I should note that Bill Kenny has appeared many times before this commission, has an impressive professional resume. Bill is a professional wetland scientist, a soil scientist, and a landscape architect. Bill received approval from the Town Plan and Sonment Commission in 2020 to locate his wetland consulting business, William Kenny Associates, and his nursery business, Native LLC, which provides and installs native plants, as well as his wife Jennifer's studio for the performing arts, Fairfield Performing Arts Studio LLC, on the premises. Bill and Jennifer now wish to construct a residential addition to the existing building at 1899 Bronson Road. That is the subject of the application before you. This property contains approximately 1.7 acres, includes a short segment of Brown's Brook and bordering wetlands in the rear of the property. I should note there is no minimum lot area requirement in the Neighborhood Design Business District. The proposed addition consists of three stories. We relocate to the east, that's the left-hand side, as you look from the street of the existing building. The footprint of the proposed addition will not infringe on the existing parking lot. The parking lot looped in is configured at present with the addition of an exit-only curb cut at the northeasterly corner of the property. The first floor of the addition will be commercial in nature and will include a foyer, office, mechanical room, bathroom, and storage. It will connect to and be utilized in concert with the first floor of the existing building. The second and third floors of the proposed addition will be residential in nature. Second floor will include a kitchen, dining area, and deck. The second floor of the addition will connect to the second floor of the existing building. It should be expanded by virtue of a dormer to the rear of the building. The third floor of the addition will be the primary bedroom suite. At this point, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce Mr. Michael Paterla of Chevelin Huntington to address stormwater drainage issues. Mike was going to try to utilize Zoom. Can you see him, Emeline?
I hope not Zoom.
He is there. Does he want to share the screen?
What was his name again, sir?
Mike Paterla.
Mike Paterla, if you could just unmute himself.
Mr. Paterla, can you hear us? If you're joining by phone, please press star six. I can't tell. You see him?
Yep.
Is he by phone or by computer?
It's leaving by computer.
Okay. Mr. Paterla? Can we take him out of order? Can we take him out of order?
We can. Uh, at this point, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Paterla, I'll introduce Bill Kenny, the principal of the applicant LLC, and the owner, to describe the proposed design.
Can you give him a text? Attorney Fitzpatrick, can you, can you give Mr. Paterla a text? Or do you?
I'll try to do so.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, Bill Kenny, the principal of William Kenny Associates, uh, Native LLC, and also the owner...
owner applicant, also the managing member of 1899 Bronson Road LLC. Tonight, I'd like to go through the, pretty much the whole proposal for you, look at existing conditions, proposed conditions, go over site-related issues, and then focus on the architecture, and also keep it professional all the way through, but at the end, I'd like to add a little bit of personal information about it. As the applicant, I'll be the applicant's representative for the first part, the majority of it. We put together a presentation for you, and I'll start with that.
Next slide?
Yes, thanks, thanks. So this is an aerial photo of the neighborhood, I'm going to try to use-
There you go, yeah.
Yeah. So you can see our, yeah, Bronson Road right here, hillside, you have Cedar Road here, there's Brown's Brook that runs here, and Short Cul-de-sac Wayside Court, and our building is right here, with the parking lot to the side. It's a 1.7 acre property, most of the property is within a conservation easement, the vast majority of it is, the easement really nicely wraps around the developed portion of the property, which is right up against Bronson Room, which shows the existing conditions are up, improvements are up against the commercial part of that neighborhood. So that easement borders Wayside to the left of the west, it borders the residential properties to the south, and it borders Cedar Road to the east, except for one property at 1845 Bronson, which is the service station that was renovated in the last few years, and a new operator there, it's one of the cleanest service stations you'll ever see, and the, we enjoy, you know, we'll take our cars over there and get them to fix by nap, if you want to reach out. That's the surroundings, the east, there's a easement was put in place in 1978 when the bank, when the building was first established as a bank. There are Brown's Brook with some associated wetlands there, there's also a FEMA floodplain and floodway. Within the easement, there are some natives, but there's quite a bit of invasive vegetation, and some neighbors have been dumping and clearing. We were, I was, as a professional, was very excited to be able to own this property and hopefully over time to enhance, to improve the habitat, and use it as a demonstration area for clients and residents and whatnot, and show people how these types of areas can, can and should be properly managed, it can be beautiful and also a great habitat at the same time. The building, the current building is two stories, 2,500 square feet in total, about just over 1,800 square feet on the first floor, about 660 square feet on the second floor. The first floor has William Kenny Associates, a small retail office for the nursery. The nursery is a boutique operation, we primarily have plants right out in front of the building, it was a drive-through for the bank previously, we stopped using that as a drive-through, and that's now where we display all the plants. And we have native perennials, shrubs, trees, vines, all sorts of, many, many different varieties. So we sell primarily retail out of that location and through a small office there, about 100 square feet. Then there's a studio classroom for teaching acting students, those classes are primarily occur after school, during the school year, in the early evenings, after school, early evenings, and sometimes on the weekend, and that is in the back right corner of the building. And lastly, we have, on that first floor, we have a bathroom, a small kitchen, and storage, and a mechanical room. Upstairs is a office, storage, and bathroom for the acting studio, and that's a very small area, it's about 660 square feet. Parking, existing parking, there's 13 spaces, one handicap space, which is in compliance with the requirements for that zone. There's one drive, two-way drive, in and out, and that's just to the right of the existing building. Utilities, this property is currently served by a septic system, the leaching fields for that system are under the parking lot, so that has been in there since 1978 when the bank was established. The nursery operations are seasonal, they're pretty much shut down sometime in September, or December, through late March. Continuing with this drawing, I'll go over some proposed conditions, briefly touch upon the building, I'm going to come back to the building to get into the architecture after we review the site information, but the building, briefly regarding the building, we're going to expand from about 2,500 square feet to 4,600 square feet, so an additional, just over 2,100 square feet. We're also, that's the addition to the building, we're proposing a 200 square foot shed, and a deck, a second story deck off the back, about 200 square feet, and then a small 700 square foot deck off the third story. One thing I want to notice, note about the construction is we're proposing modular construction, which will, we're excited will cause very little disruption to the neighborhood, as well as very little disruption to our businesses, put in a foundation over a week or two, plop in the building within one day, and then there'll be connections that need to be taken care of, and the building doesn't come with siding on it, so siding will be put on once it's here, but it'll really go up very quickly, and the connections will take four weeks or so after the building is plopped in. So very minimize a lot of disruption. The building with addition is about 100 feet from Wayside Court, to the left, about 180 feet from the house behind us, and you have, again, you have the easement, with all of these distances, you have that easement between the addition, and then it's over 200 feet to Cedar Drive here where there's other residential properties.
Are there residences across the street?
No, across Cedar, but not, across Bronson is the market.
Oh, that's right.
Which, I, I met, this week I met the tenants who are owners of Reading Road House, and they're indicated that they're going to be putting in a deli and a market there again, so we're looking forward to that, to that use being active again. We are proposing with regard to site work, the drive and the parking, we're going to keep the parking the way it is, but adding a one-way exit at the far end of the parking lot. We have spoken with our neighbor to the east, this property is owned by David Osilio, and he's a resident of town, and he's here this evening, and I think he might speak later on. We understand the parking complies with, even with the addition, it complies with the number of spaces that are needed. Utilities, we are proposing to switch from a septic system, which is a great environmental benefit for the stream, and connect to the town sewer. If, well, tied to that is we're, our stormwater management system, we're proposing a new rain garden, the hunting company, which might be Terrell, has designed a rain garden, and also, we're going to use the existing leaching field, the storage that provides, and use that for stormwater detention as well. With regards to, I mentioned earlier, there's a FEMA floodplain and floodway, the flood zone does extend through the building, the building existing and proposed is in compliance with the FEMA regulations, the flood, the base flood elevation in the area of the building is approximately, is a little less than elevation 50, our finished floor is elevation 52, so we're two feet above that. Our building's on a slab, there's no basement, no crawl space. The proposed addition, the rear portion of the building will be on piles, so it'll be completely open underneath the building to allow for floodwaters to go under the building, and so the carrying capacity, the flood storage capacity of that floodplain will be increased. Might be Terrell estimated that the piles will take up some storage, but with excavating out beneath the building, that we're going to go, we're going to remove 15 cubic feet of storage for the piles, but we're going to add over, at least over 600 cubic feet because of the material we're removing underneath the building. So, and, so we're, we believe we're complying with the FEMA requirements with regards to the building, being compliant, compliant, and also not impacting the flood storage on the property. Lighting, there are existing full mounted lights on the site with the building and the shed, we're going to remove two of those, and we're going to add three lights on the building that are scunces, that are facing down, and they're dark sky compliant, they're over the doors of, two doors on the building, and one is on the shed, and those will be, provided on the drawing off to the right, there's information about that light, but it's a wall pack, full cutoff in compliance with the zoning requirements. Some other miscellaneous things, we do have trash and recycling containers, right now we're using a typical container used by residents, and that's working just fine for us, so we have a garbage container, a recycling container, they're on the west side of the building, we're going to add a fence around that to provide an enclosure around that. We are going to, we're proposing a bike rack, and then we are proposing some native street trees out in front of the building in accordance with the request of the town arbers. And again, we, in the future, would like to, the idea is to really enhance that easement area. So now, I'll focus a little bit more detail on the architecture, you can move to the next slide, please, Emily. So this is a view of the existing building, when we bought the building, it was, you know, I've been a bank, it hadn't really been renovated since it was constructed in the late 70s, we completely gutted the inside, if you wanted a heavy-duty steel safe at that time, you could have got one for free, about the size of a closet, but there was this, a big bay window in the front here, no door, so we added the double windows on either side and the central door to give this building, it really looks like an old colonial house, although it was built in 70, by adding, we really wanted to improve that aesthetic and accentuate that colonial look, so we added the windows in the front and the door. The drive-through is this far end, and now we're using that drive-through space for the selling plants, so we have a door down the end where we sell plants out of there. And you can see, this is the old drive-through, we put down gravel, it's really working quite nicely, allowing stormwater to infiltrate, and then just all the different native plants you can see that we have out for sale. Next slide, please. This is a view stepping back, these views are from the parking lot, and this is the side of the building where the addition is proposed. The addition is most, I'd say at least half of the addition is over a paved surface that already exists, a paved patio, and so it'll be right off this side here. This entrance is for Jen's Acting Studios, where they currently enter right here, had been the primary or only entrance for the bank, so now that's her entrance, so we have the three entrances for the three different businesses. Now I'd like to show you some images of different architectural buildings in the neighborhood. We're trying to really create harmony and integrate with the colonial New England architectural style within the neighborhood, within Greenfield Hill Village and beyond. So this is a house that's less than a mile away on 1135 Mill Hill Road, it has a beautiful colonial house, white, with a gray barn next to it, and so we're really, we love this, this, the architecture of these buildings, and we're inspired by this. Next slide is just another view of this same property, with this tiny house on the left and the barn in the back on the right. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the market right across the street. For over about 10 years, that, this was its color, it was a dark gray with the windows that are black trim or dark gray trim, they recently just painted it white, but it's been dark gray for many years, and something that looked like a barn. Because we already have that colonial house-like look, we are looking to make the addition look like a barn, and so, next slide, please. So here's a rendering where we, a view from the left from the street, where you can see the barn addition off to the left. And next slide, please, this will be a shot straight on. You can see the shed just to the left here, and then the barn-like structure, so this would be a door on the left that goes up, a flight of stairs would be right in front of this, who would go up to the residence on the second and third floor, and the first floor would be Jen's office, storage, and bathroom, and just to the right, between the existing building and the proposed barn-like structure, we would have a door into a lobby for her business, where students could, they go, they enter that door, take an immediate right into the classroom, or they could go to the left to the bathroom, or go into the storage where there's costumes and things of that sort.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Sorry. What do you think about the aesthetic of the new market in terms of, you know, white paint with sort of asphalt roof? And, you know, you, you were chosen, you've chosen to go, at least with your design, with a gray paint?
Right. I prefer the gray, particularly in our situation, because we do have a residential-looking structure and then a barn structure, so we prefer that. I think-
To create a contrast?
Yes, and to say we're two different structures, because trying, I, we thought about adding on a white structure, that residential-looking structure is just so classic, pure in its form, that putting an addition on it that looked like it didn't, wasn't working, I thought it needed to be something that contrasted, and having this colonial New England landscape where we have homes and barns just seemed to work nicely, so that's why we took that route.
And what materials are you proposing for the outside of the shed and the barn?
Yes, first, I'll say that they're going to be the exact same material, which is something that you asked for, and we're looking at a vertical board, which turns right, I am a landscape architect, not an architect. We're going to use board and batten cladding, and we're looking at a hardy board, I can show you, I've got some, and it's very similar to the look, they have board and batten across the street, and, this is the actual product, one of them.
So it kind of resembles the- Last question on that, Mr. Kenny, a hardy product, are they like a mixture of composite cement, and it's durable, right?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Quick question about, so, it's a little bit higher than the existing building, because two, the top two floors are residential and the bottom will be commercial.
Yes.
Is it, what will occupy the commercial? Is there an existing business that's going to expand into there, like for the office, for your other businesses?
Yes, so-
It won't be retail?
The existing building, the acting school, has the classroom on the first floor, and then an office, storage, and a bathroom on the second floor, we're going to take that use from the second floor and put it on the first floor of the addition, so move that office, storage, and bathroom to the first floor.
And what will be on the second floor of the old building then?
Then residential.
Oh, so it's going to be residential on the old building and on the new building?
Yes.
Oh, interesting.
Just the second floor of the existing building.
Okay, is that set up for residential now, or?
Not, no.
Oh, it has to be redone?
Yes.
And then the new, the new building, I see, I, for some reason, I cannot pull up my plans on this tablet, I don't know why.
And I do have, I was going to-
Oh, you're going to show, I'm, I'm just like, the footprint, does it go farther back?
Yes. So, the back and, the back line of the building is flush with the existing building.
And it, it's basically between the existing building and the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Where there's primarily a stone patio there.
And there's a, the shed then would be, um, oh, in the, also a little bit newer-
It's farther, yeah, pretty off the park.
Okay.
Yep.
But they're not closer to the regulated area, um, the wetlands area than what's already there now?
Correct.
Except you're using up some of the empty space between the building and the parking lot?
Yes.
And, yeah.
We did, um, obtain a certificate of, of wetland performance, uh, compliance with the wetland agency.
Just curious, what's the wetlands buffer, upland review area for Brown? I know it changed-
I was gonna say it changed.
Two weeks ago.
So, everything is a hundred feet now, I believe.
But this was applied for before that. It used to be like, not very, not as big, I think, back then.
Uh, it might be-
It doesn't really, yeah.
It might be-
It was like sixty maybe?
I have the pool right here. It had been. She's like a plant. It's in here, it's gotta be in here somewhere. Might be on my drone.
It doesn't look very wide because I know Brown's Brook didn't have as wide, uh-
Right, it extends through, it's beyond the building. It extends through the middle apartment line.
The upland review area?
Yes.
Oh.
So, it's in all the existing improvements, not all of them, but it extends through, uh, it's the street side of the building.
You're saying that the existing building is within the upland review area of the old-
Yes, if we go back to the site plan, I guess.
Okay. So, you're actually adding construction into the upland review area?
Yes.
I thought I read that nothing was going beyond there.
Uh, or nothing, uh, I'm not sure.
I don't know, I thought I read something, yeah.
There's the regulated upland review area back there.
Oh, okay. So, that's been there since the seventies now, I guess?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this might've been one of Tom Stanky's first easements in town.
Wow.
Nineteen seventy-eight, I think, so it was way back.
You had that, yeah.
Um, so, uh, the architect, but, yeah, we're just about at the end of, uh-
Through the park, that's the wetland. It's hard to tell there's FEMA.
So, we were using, working to create a barn style with a soft park, soft box, gable, roof lines, um, batten siding, the board and batten siding. The windows, the arrangement of the windows and the type of windows to look like a barn, using the square as well as some vertical windows. We couldn't avoid, we, with a door and things like that, we, you don't see, we have a horizontal band of windows as well, square windows similar to mini barn, uh, with the arrangements. Then, so that, I could, though, at the end of our presentation, we do have the architectural drawings and I can go through those if you'd like, or, um, as well as the Huntington Company site plan, but I think I've pretty much covered all the details of that.
I think so.
Okay.
Commissioner Brown?
Can you go back to the color drawing with the, the yellow and the green and everything?
The landscape plan.
Yeah, um, it's the landscape plan, yeah. I'm trying to figure out the new building versus the old building, because the old building, to me, on an aerial, it looks like a square.
Yes.
But in this picture, is that the whole gray area? That doesn't look the same shape.
I can understand why there's confusion because we are illustrating on here both the addition to the side as well as where we're putting, there's a dormer off the back for that residential, so I'll show you here, this-
Could you show the old building footprint?
Footprint is, is here.
That's the existing footprint, okay.
Right, this is the addition. It's about twenty-three by twenty-three feet square.
Okay.
Um, the shed is twenty by ten, ten feet deep, twenty feet long. And then, this is where a dormer will come, come off the back.
The dormer is not on the ground?
On the second floor.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, there's a deck also, um-
Yes, that's right here.
Okay.
About two hundred square feet.
And the stone patio that's on the front, is that already in existence, what's there now?
Yes, stone patio probably comes back, comes back to about here.
Oh, so you have, I'm trying to figure out the difference in impervious surface from now till then.
Yes.
It seems like you're not adding a lot because you had a stone patio anyway.
Correct. Um, on the Huntington Company, they have their calculations right on the drawing, on the left-hand side.
Okay, I, I'll have to look it in my other computer.
That's at the end of the, near the end of the presentation.
Okay. Oh, it's on this presentation?
I, it's, the, the drawing is in this.
Oh, great. And then, just, my next question, how to do with FEMA, maybe you could just walk us through that, there's so many lines that, like FEMA lines and-
Right.
It seemed like our, um, director had some questions about FEMA compliance and venting and things like that, maybe you could walk us through that. But before that, could you, so, which plan then will, um, show the change in impervious surface? Oh, that's the, the chart, like on the very page, um-
Left-hand side, uh, drawing one-on-one by the title data accumulation plan of the Huntington Company.
Page sixteen of this presentation?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I can, I can tap it real quick.
There's not that many plans. At the landscape plan, data accumulation plan, that's page sixteen of our-
No, it's second to last.
Second to last one, yeah.
Yes, second to last one. And on the left-hand side, and, uh, I, he focused on the additional areas impervious. I have a reduction, or, I don't have a slate.
It gets a little blurry, but I'm doing this. Can you read it?
Here's the large section.
Oh, great.
It's right in, this is the old asset.
Does it make a difference if you're changing, like in, um, from a septic to, in terms of impervious surface, does it help if you're not using it up for septic system?
Um, for sanitary discharge, the impervious surface is independent.
I see now.
It is good to limit the potential for pollutants getting to Brown's. But with regard to FEMA, the Huntington Company chose to show two boundary lines. One line, you take and you just trace off the FEMA map, which, that line is placed on a map that's at a very small scale and, and it's, FEMA doesn't have precise topographic information for the property when they put that line on, so it's not tied into the local elevation as precisely as it could be if you have a survey or map the topography on your property. So, they, Huntington Company showed the line exactly as FEMA showed it and then they showed the line based on the site's, uh, topographic information. So, you have one that's site-specific and one that's specific to the FEMA map.
And is the new construction-
We're compliant with-
You are compliant.
Yeah, with both, regardless of what line you look at.
You don't have to build it up on stilts, in other words?
We, the finished floor is above, two feet above the, the FEMA flood elevation in this area, um, the base flood elevation. If we were to put in a basement or a crawl space, we would need to put in the flood openings, but we chose, we're not doing a basement or a, uh, crawl space, we're, so we're just gonna, we're gonna have piles, but they're only gonna be two feet tall off the back of the building. So, the building's elevated two feet in the back.
Okay. And then, the impervious surface, I do see something here, but I can't understand it.
I know, I'm having trouble making heads. I think you might be saying that the, uh-
It says fourteen percent, I don't know what that means.
Right, so, uh, with the existing and proposed, it's about ten thousand seven hundred and fifty, um, square feet of impervious surface.
Mr. Chairman, I reached out to Mr. Petarla. His response is, I've been on the computer since six-twenty. I'm aligned, how can I tell him what to do to-
Press his unmute button and he could be, he should be able, if he presses his unmute button, he ought to be able to talk.
Or is he using, is he using phone for audio bills?
I have no idea. Do you want to call him?
You should just call him.
Yeah, I have a cell phone. You know, call him, put him on speaker.
Perfect.
Okay. Oh, cool. Cool. I think I have it.
Hi, this is Mike, this is Mike.
Oh, hi.
Good throwing your voice.
Could you all, could you all hear me?
We can hear you now, yes.
Good.
Go right ahead.
I didn't, I didn't want to fall asleep on the couch, but. One of the questions by, uh, one of the members, Brown's Brook used to be, or was, eighty-three feet, uh, the setback, and, uh, is, uh-
What was that?
Eighty-three feet, it used to be. And, and I think the numbers have just changed for, I think every watershed now is gonna be one hundred feet.
That's right.
But it, it was, it was eighty-three feet and that's the line you see, uh, closer to, to Bronson Road, okay? Now, a, a, as, as, as far as the, the flood lines, as I think Bill Kenny was telling you, we have the FEMA line according to what the FEMA maps show. The FEMA maps show, if you look at the proposed building, I mean, the existing building, the, the FEMA line is the one that's closer to Bronson Road, okay? And, and the ones that we did according to elevations is the one closer to Brown's Brook. But, again, as Bill Kenny said, we're, we're considering worst-case scenario, scenario where we're raising the elevation of the floor to elevation fifty-two, which is, which is well above, uh, the hundred-year flood. So, we're honoring bo, both, both lines. Um, and again, this, this was reviewed by the engineering department and, uh, what I did is, on the left side of the drawing, I did a stormwater recharge calculation and a water quality volume, uh, which was required. This was reviewed by the engineering department and, uh, I had a comment i, in the beginning when we went to the code complying meeting from Megga Jane, who, uh, is, I'm not sure her exact title, Assistant Town Engineer or Town Engineer. And, uh, she most recently sent, I believe, a, a, a favorable, uh, comment back to, uh, to Jim Wentz, that, uh, what we did, what my calculations show on the left side is, is acceptable to her. Um, again, as Bill Kenny said in the beginning, as far as stormwater recharge goes, we're using the existing, um, septic system, leaching, uh, fields, uh, and we're gonna put in for the addition, for the additions that are gonna be constructed, we're gonna take the leaders and put them into the existing septic system that is already under the driveway. And for water quality, she wanted me to consider the entire impervious area for the site, which I did, that was one of the revisions. And what I, I was a little shy, so I added a, a rain garden, which is in the, uh, the Westerly portion of the parking lot, and, uh, that's roughly about two hundred square foot in size. And again, this was-
Can we have the approval email from, um, Ms. Jane and send that record?
Yeah, I can forward that.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Go ahead, Mr. Petarla.
Um, I, I think that's about it. I mean, we, we added that, so, the, the, um, rain garden was added to, to, to make sure we had enough volume for the water quali, quality volume calculation. And, uh, my opinion, she was satisfied and, and sent a response back to us.
Any questions for Mr. Petarla? Commissioner Brown?
Do you know what the increase in impervious surface is from the existing to the proposed?
Just shy of eight hundred square feet, about seven seventy-six.
And that's right where the new addition will go?
That, that's the addition-
But it's smaller.
Yep, additions in the shed, yep.
And, so it's not as much as you would expect because it's using up some of the existing stone patio for the addition, right?
Yeah, yes, that plus, for, for drainage, for drainage, um, in, in, in Fairfield, we never include the, the, the area of a deck because the deck, the, the deck is not really impervious. The, the deck is built with slats of board or, or fiberboard and, and, and the water doesn't, water, you know, penetrates through, through the, through the, uh, through the, uh, through the, through the slats, uh, uh, on the sides. So, so that's, that's the big difference. If you look at the, on the table, it's about a thousand and, uh, what I'm saying is just under eight hundred, it's about seven ninety-six.
And I, I can't see the rain garden on this, um, is on the left or the right?
It's, as you look at it, it's on the right, it's on the right side, it's a oblong, oblong figure and there, there's a note that says proposed.
Oh, it's a long skinny like oval shaped thing?
Yes, that's right. Yes, 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 yes. And, and again, we're honoring both, both flood, floodlines that we show on the map and we're, we're compliant with FEMA regs.
And the, um, could you just maybe describe, summarize what the drainage system is? I, I can't see the plans, is it-
Well, what the, what the drainage system is, um, I think it's a very light line on, on my map, on our map, and it's a, and it's, it's existing septic system, it, it, the bu, the building was never connected to the sewer. The building was built before the sewers came through. The sewers came through on Hillside Road, uh, let me just see if I can read the small print on this map. It was, I'm gonna get you a year, I hope, about, oh, about oh-four, about oh-four, the sewer was extended down Hillside Road. So, our proposal right now is to abandon the septic system and tie the existing building and the proposed building into the sewer on Hillside. And, uh, we're in the process of getting, uh, the existing sewer monitored for volume and we'll, uh, make a report out and submit it to the Sewer Commission. And, uh, what we're gonna do with the old system is, uh, discontinue the septic tank, but use the, the, uh, leaching, um, trenches for stormwater and, and introduce the, um, the, uh, the leader drains into that.
And the leaching trenches look like they're under the parking lot, no?
That's correct, that's correct, yep. And that's where they were since, uh, day one, since the building-
Oh, oh, okay.
Commissioner Brown, did you have other questions?
No, I'm good.
Uh, did, uh, do you have to redesign the stormwater detention system if you don't get, uh, sewer connection approval and, and are unable to abandon the septic system?
Uh, of, of course, but the thing is, my, my gut feeling from just past experience, I, I, I don't think we're gonna have a problem to, to tie into the existing sewer.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Petarla? Is that right? Petarla? Mr. Kenny, back to you. I'm not sure, I assume Mr. Petarla will stay on or will he stay on or?
You want more, Bill?
I'll be here.
Sure. Let me, let me just wrap this up. Only I'll wrap it.
And the applicant, I was just gonna say. Next month, uh, my wife and I will celebrate thirty-three years of being married. And thirty of those years we've been in Fairfield, working or living, for both. Um, we raised both our kids here, they went to public schools, they're living in Brooklyn now. Uh, we, um, have both been very active. I was on the shelter commission and just seeing was there many other meetings with me for like twelve years I was on that and- We've both been very active. I was on the shelter commission, and Justin was there many other meetings with me for like twelve years I was on that. Justin was the secretary. I was on the flood, or water control board for a few years, Jen and I. And we both, when we both moved to town, we didn't have businesses, and then we started our own businesses. And we just, we love the town, love the neighborhood. We love working and helping people, and what she does with the kids through her course program is amazing. Just love helping to make the town healthier and more vibrant, and at the same time, looking to make ourselves healthier and more vibrant. We're so busy with our businesses that we love what we do, and we love to be able to be in the same location. I'm working at meetings like this most nights, and so, or working late. So, you know, we just look forward to continuing to be productive and contributing to the community and hope that we can do it at this location in both personal and professional way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chairman, I would now like to conclude by addressing the relevant regulations applicable to this property. Proposed addition has been reviewed by the Town of Fairfield Conservation Department, which approved a certificate of wetlands conformance for the construction of the proposed addition. The zoning regs for the Neighborhood Design Business District permit the creation of unlimited commercial residential use in this zone. Residential use is limited per twelve, twelve point five point five to fifty percent of the total floor area. The calculations shown on the architectural plans confirm that the proposed residential space is forty-seven point four three percent of the square footage, less than the residential maximum of fifty percent. The proposed residential use also satisfies the regulation requirement of no more than two floors of residential use, and a minimum floor area of seven hundred and fifty square feet. Proposed residential use is the second and third floors only, and exceeds the seven hundred and fifty square foot minimum floor area. Proposed addition meets the height maximum of three stories or thirty feet, whichever is less. The parking lot configuration will not be altered by the construction of the proposed addition. The existing acting studio and office uses generate a parking demand of eleven spaces. Residential apartment requires two spaces for a total of thirteen spaces. There are thirteen spaces on site. I submit the proposal here fully satisfies these special permit regulations. Proposed design are consistent with the neighborhood. No change in existing traffic because there's no expansion of the existing commercial square footage, or rather simply the addition of a residential component. We, I would submit this plan is, is consistent with the Town Plan of Conservation and Development since it conforms with the existing neighborhood design regs, thereby avoiding over-expansion. The reasons I've outlined are because the application be approved. I'd be happy to address Attorney Green's letter of late this afternoon as part of my rebuttal. Rebuttal, thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Bron?
Aren't you actually doubling the residential, though? Because you're, you're having a residential above the old house and a residential in the new house. Those will be occupied by people living there, won't they?
The residential, the second floor of the existing building, second and third floors of the addition, does not exceed the commercial of the existing first floor and first floor of the addition. That was my point on the forty-seven point seven three percent. Does that make sense?
I, I didn't do the, eleven spaces are needed for the commercial, and that's not changing?
Oh, the parking, yes.
I'm talking about parking.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, that doesn't, the commercial does not change. But the residential and apartment, the, the, the space over the, the existing second floor will be part of Bill and Jen, Jennifer Kenny's apartment. That's not a separate rental space. There is simply one apartment, and that generates two spaces. Eleven plus two is thirteen.
You're adding another apartment on the new building, right?
The apartment on the new, the second floor of the new building connects to the second floor of the existing building and is part of the same apartment.
Oh, you're not having two separate CFOs in rental?
No, no, sorry.
Oh, I totally misunderstood. I didn't realize it was, I thought it was a freestanding building.
No, connects.
Oh, okay, okay.
One apartment.
It's one apartment, one big apartment.
That's pretty big.
Bigger. Okay, thank you. That's a good clarification.
Any other questions for Mr., excuse me, Attorney Fitzpatrick? Your, Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, and maybe this is for Mr. and Mrs. Kenny. Thank you very much for your presentation. But I want to know, in reference to the letter, what was the outreach like to the neighbors? Because it seems like they're not as happy.
I'd be happy to go through the letter on rebuttal, but I'd rather have comments from the public before I do so. I want to make, I want to be able to adjust everything at the same time if I could.
Yeah, as long as you do that, yeah, fine.
Good. So that ends your. That ends it. That ends for your initial presentation? It does. I'll open up the public comments, starting with people or anybody in, in how, in person. Does any member of the public in person wish to be heard on this matter? Sir, come on up. If you can just give me your, give us, excuse me, your name and address, keep the comments remaining to the application. That's about it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Nacilio. I live at sixty-twenty Main Street, Stratford, Connecticut. I'm a real estate developer and investor, and in two thousand twenty, I purchased the abandoned gas station in Greenfield Hill adjacent to the subject application property. The address of the gas station is eighteen forty-five Bronson Road, and the application is directly next door, eighteen ninety-nine. I undertook a restoration of that structure, and it's currently leased as was previously a repair shop. And immediately, or not immediately, but very soon thereafter, the Kennys purchased the old bank building, which is the subject of tonight's application. They spent quite a bit of money and time and effort, did a wonderful refurbishment, and have been operating their business there for two to three years now. Mr. Kenny is a, and Mrs. Kenny are model neighbors. It's, it's quiet. Although I don't operate the business there, I drive by my properties every week and tinker with them, and I'm always in an old pickup truck on weekends, keeping an eye on them. I looked at the application, and I am here to fully support it. I think it's a wonderful addition to Greenfield Hill. The single residential dwelling above the retail and uses that are currently there, I think will be an asset to the Neighborhood Divide, the Design District in Greenfield Hill. And I'm hopeful that you will approve his application without conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in person, I'll turn to those, anybody attending remotely. Does anybody who's attending remotely or by phone wish to be heard on this application, eighteen ninety-nine Bronson Road?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, I'm sorry, Attorney Green, I didn't know you were on. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission and staff. My name is Joel Green. I practice Longbridge Port, the offices of Green and Gross. And it's my pleasure to appear before you this evening on behalf of Marco and Lance Newkirtin, who own the property at twenty-five Wayside Court. I'm going to be extremely brief and respectful of the time of the Commission. This evening, you have my letter, and I know that Attorney Fitzpatrick will address it shortly, but you have my letter. I would merely ask the following. First, I would ask that the Commission incorporate the record of the initial application for special permit. The hearing on that matter was heard on September fifteenth, two thousand twenty. And I think that it would be helpful to the Commission in understanding the nature and extent of the application if the Commission incorporated that record into the record of this matter. So, that's my first request. My second request is, on the parking calculations, I would ask the Commission to make inquiry of the applicant as to how they calculated the parking that has provided the thirteen spaces. And I would ask specifically how the shed, which is proposed, is incorporated in the calculation of the parking. And lastly, but not leastly, I'm aware that, and my experience has always been that this Commission is very sensitive to commercial uses, particularly on properties that border on residential properties. And I also know for over the many years how respectful this Commission is and sensitive to the notion of a Neighborhood Design Business District, which, as I point out in my letter, is designed to provide local neighborhoods with needed and desirable convenience goods and services in a manner which will not be detrimental to the surrounding residential areas. The uses shall be limited to those which will primarily serve the local neighborhood and are consistent with the purpose for which the district was designed. And with those requests, I will conclude my remarks, and I want to thank the Commission for your generous patience and your time this evening.
Attorney Green, what, what about the two thousand twenty application is relevant to this, to this application?
Well, specifically, the representations which were made as to the nature and extent of the businesses that would be conducted on the premises, and how the parking was calculated. It's not at all clear to me how the, how the parking in this instance has been calculated, particularly where the original approval was for a retail office and an art studio. And now it's being cast in a different light, and I think that that's critical to the Commission's consideration. But specifically, I would ask the Commission to dig in on the parking, which is really inadequate for the present uses, as I point out in my letter. It's, there's robust activity on the site, and I, I think it would be of help, and I don't think it's a great burden to the Commission. The minutes, unfortunately, on that meeting are not particularly detailed. That's why I think that the record would be helpful to the Commission. That's the basis of my request.
Well, you're asking for the two thousand twenty application of this parcel, or?
Correct.
More than this part, just this parcel?
Just this parcel.
And we granted, I assume, what, a special, a special permit for what's currently there?
Yes.
Okay. I'll let, yeah, I'll hear, I'll let Attorney Fitzpatrick point on that. Okay, anything else, Attorney Green?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that's joining us remotely or by phone wish to be heard on this matter? Joining by phone, oh, there we go. Go ahead.
Oh, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Just give your name and address, please.
Jody Peterson, fourteen Hillside Road. And we live in the house on the corner of Hillside and North Cedar, across from the market. And this proposed, or native in the gas station. Anyway, I just had more, an aesthetic question for the committee. The White House that was shown before on Mill Hill Road is actually one of my favorite houses in Fairfield. But I think part of the reason that it's so appealing is that the barn is consisted of authentic barn wood. And I don't believe that the same look is going to be achieved with the siding you're proposing. I like the vertical board and battened look, but I fear it will come off as a large gloomy gray wall, given the height and the lack of other materials, for example, the stonework on the mark. Therefore, I just wonder if painting it white would be more appealing, just given the nature of how tall and large the building is, and there's not really a great amount of detail on it. And I'm also just curious about the, the large barn door. You know, it, it's a very tall-looking, appearing door, but I'm wondering, does it really open? Is it functional? So, just curious about those two issues. Not opposed to what Mr. Kenny is trying to do. I've understood from many people that they're a great couple, and, but I just am a little concerned about the aesthetics of that large gray wall.
Thank you. Anything else?
Not for me.
Good. Thank you for your comments. Does any other member of the public joining remotely wish to be heard on this matter? If you're calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself. As the, any other member of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Again, if you're calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself. Hearing nobody else and seeing nobody else in person, I'll close the public com. Oh, never mind.
Hello?
Hi, yes, we can hear you.
Hi, hi, it's Lance Newkirtin. My wife and I live at twenty-five Wayside Court. And Attorney Green is representing us, and I just simply wanted to say that, you know, Joel, excuse me, the Kennys tell a very similar story. My wife and I moved here, we've been here for twenty-two years. We're huge advocates of Greenfield Hill, and we are probably the biggest cheerleaders there are regarding the businesses in town, especially as a result in regards to our neighborhood. And we're hoping that we can effectively work through any of the differences that have been outlined in the letter. And I, I think that we're positive that we can work through those, but obviously, we do have, you know, some concerns and some things that we've had to deal with, going from a very quiet bank that was open till three P M. every day, now to kind of much more of a hustle and bustle with headlights shining in our house and kids running in and out of acting classes. And it's, you know, something that we're all getting used to, and certainly don't want to, you know, throw any, you know, sticks in the road in terms of, of them achieving what they want to do. But obviously, we do have some concerns, and again, I'm just hoping that we can, we can all work through it and get along as neighbors, so. That's it.
Thank you. Anything further?
That's it.
Thank you. Any other members of the public joining remotely wish to be heard on this matter? Again, if you're calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself. Any member of the public wish to be heard? Last call. Hearing no one else, seeing no one else, I'll close the public comment portion of this application. Attorney Fitzpatrick, rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman, at this point, I'd like to, Mr. Kenny just addressed that design issue, and then I'll go through.
Fair. And his request for the, I know parking is in there, I think the records request is new, so that aspect as well, please. Thank you.
Question, two questions about the barn. I fully agree, the barn on.
Mill Hill Terrace.
I love the natural look, and that's, we're going to, our intention is to do that. We, 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 we're going to make every effort to do the natural look. So, there was a, we have a design detail to make it look like there's a big barn door in front of it. It's not a door, it's more than just, it's an aesthetic thing, and we're working on some of those architectural details still. But the idea was to make it look like it's a door, but it's not a door, so it won't be, it's not going to be operational.
Commissioner Bron?
Do you think it would help to break up the sort of vertical line by having it two-toned, like white below or dark above or something? I mean, that might be something to think about.
We'll get to that.
Or find a way to make this shabby chic.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's what she was talking about. This, this looks nice, but it doesn't look like an old barn. I'm sure, yeah.
Right, we'd love for it to look like.
Thank you.
Oh, I, I have a question about parking.
Well, we're going to.
Oh, okay.
Attorney Fitzpatrick is going to address the letter. At this point, I'd like to distribute a copy of the two thousand twenty application, along with my marked-up copy of the minutes from the meeting where it was decided. Well, can we then, is it fair then if we're gonna be incorporating some of the application from 2020 that the, we can put the entire record in as requested?
I have no objection to that, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted this to speak to it.
No, no, that's fine. I just, I wanted to ask you that. If there's no objection, then I'll... Excuse me? Oh, okay. We will do that then.
Certainly.
Okay, because I don't want, especially, I don't want.
I'd just like to know two things in particular. Number one, there was no public hearing on this matter. It was a zoning compliance, and it was decided on September 15 without the benefit of a public hearing. Number two, this notion that there was some hidden flaw where the commission was misled.
Uses, yeah.
If you look at the second page of the application for zoning compliance, and you look at the last paragraph, it says, "FPAS is a performing arts studio that provides professional acting instruction for people of all ages. Instruction occurs through group classes, private coaching, and summer camp sessions. At 1899, FPAS proposes to hold after-school classes and one-on-one coaching sessions. The FPAS summer camp sessions will occur on other property. The camp sessions will not occur at 1899 Bronson Road." So, you know, I take some, I'm bridge at the fact that the implications may that I would mislead this commission, or my client would mislead this commission. That is what Jennifer Kenny's business is, and it was fairly described, and it was approved.
And I see the business names on the statement of intent, page one, second page of which you just gave us, are the same businesses that would be operating on the site afterwards?
And operate on-site today. To adjust Attorney Green's letter, first of all, I was surprised to get it at 3:20 the night of the, the day of the public hearing. Secondly, the adverse possession claim, as this commission well knows, is completely irrelevant to this application. The encroachment question was into a conservation easement area. I'm of the opinion you cannot acquire adverse possession rights where there's a conservation easement in place. Different issue entirely. That's probably equally immaterial. It has nothing to do, even if the Newkirtins were able to prove adverse possession to the piece of property that they have encroached on, it would have no impact on the FAR or the coverage or anything. It wouldn't have any impact on the application. The FAR permitted, the permitted coverage is 75 percent, and the permitted FAR is 100 percent, and the FAR coverage is under 10 percent proposed.
And Attorney Green acknowledges in his letter that we are not going to adjudicate ownership entitled. But just out of curiosity, how much of an area are we talking about? If you know. Okay, and it's probably in what?
To put more color on it, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Jim went for the record. It's entirely residentially zoned. Only a portion of this property is commercially zoned. The rest of it's residential. The claim at hand is the residentially zoned portion of the property. So if, if their claim is successful, it doesn't impact the calculations of the commercially zoned.
Oh, I see your point. Okay. Again, not really for us. It was more of a background.
To continue on, Mr. Chairman, I think the zoning director can confirm this chatter about noise, this and that. There have been no complaints about the three uses on-site made to the zoning department. The house is at least 150 feet away from my client's place of business. There is no proposal to increase, intensify the business use. The trade of the second floor of the existing building, changing that from commercial to residential, and in turn, letting Jennifer Kenny have the use of the first floor of the proposed addition is virtually a wash, probably a 50-square-foot increase in residential over commercial. There then is a recitation of the section 12.5, apparently alleging that the uses that are on-site are not permitted. The fact of the matter is, as I just showed you, the application was made to this commission, and it was approved by this commission, and it fairly described the very uses that exist there today. It's a gross exaggeration of the number of people on-site, in particular, the performing arts studio. Whereas onsite, they have 10 people, but it's Jennifer Kenny and one assistant on-site. Parking. Figures, what I did was to split the 2430 of available square footage into retail and office, produced 4.88 spaces up for retail, 6.075 spaces for office. That's 10.93, rounded to 11. And that's, I mean, it is not exactly a clear-cut line between the use of bathrooms and the use of storage, whether something is Jennifer Kenny's acting studio, or whether something is Bill Kenny's consulting service. Tried to pick a reasonable number, discussed it with staff, split the number equally. It comes to 13 spaces. That's what's on-site, along with the two spaces for the residential, and that's what's on-site.
Commissioner Braun?
So what about the nursery? Is that included in?
It is.
In the retail, so the retail includes the consulting and the native?
Yes.
Planting?
Took all the, all the commercials, if you will, and then apportioned it between the acting studio and native and Jennifer Kenny's association. Basically, to conclude, there's nothing in this letter that supports the contention that the application before you does not conform to the relevant zoning regulations. Mr. and Mrs. Kenny are hard-working people who want to improve their property. The reasons I've outlined, I request this application to be approved. Hey and I really have to answer it. Any further questions the commission may have?
Attorney Fitzpatrick, I assume for traffic, we still have, the entrance and egress are going to be the same.
The one change, Mr. Chairman, is the proposal to add an exit only at the southerly, right, the left-hand side of your property from this street. Sometimes, there's only one in and out today. Sometimes cars have difficulty. They drive down to the end. They think there's going to be an exit there, down toward, this is the Nacilio's gas station. They think there's going to be an exit there, and there's not, may have to come back. We would like to put an exit only right there, so to, which only improve, exit only, only improve, improve.
Left and right is allowed? I mean, left and right?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm asking, all right.
We were proposing left and right. If you wanted to make it right-hand only, that may simplify or so be.
Well, just because I haven't, I forgot that there was an exit only being proposed. Was there, was a sightline done for that?
Actually, Mr. Galante did it.
That's right where the junction of Hillside is on Bronson.
Yeah.
Correct.
It's actually right near the gas station.
It's up front in the hole, gas station, yeah. It's almost adjacent to the gas station in terms of.
It is.
I'll make, I'll make one comment.
I'll let him just finish with it. Mr. Galante, I had a question on traffic, so I'll go to you next.
I can't find the newspaper. Mr. Galante, in 2020, did a traffic review, you know, given.
Well, traffic review, I think, yeah, I mean, you're not adding too much. The streets are very low. I think we can probably use our own.
He thought that right-turn exit only would make, would make good sense. It was part of his recommendation.
That was his recommendation at the time, but nobody did it. Traffic, I mean, traffic generation, like I said, I think we can, with special permit, we can use our own expertise, knowing the area. You don't have much of a, you don't have an increase. The sightline catches my attention because normally I at least see it, but I don't, you have an existing entrance and egress, which is there, and then it's a matter of that, that extra exit. That at least Mr. Galante way back when said, maybe just have that right-only.
He did.
Okay.
Driving that road, there's a considerable sight distance down Bronson and to the north, as well as when you look left, it's straight.
No, I, yeah, it is both. Commissioner Francis?
I did the site visit, my site visit today, and I did exactly what you said. I went to the other end to get out, and went, oh, can't get out here. So I think that's a really good addition. And there was only one other car in the parking lot, but it was hard enough turning around, really. So that's good. And yes, right-only is probably a good idea because of Cedar, Bronson, Hillside, you know, and you just, you could go around testos, whatever it's going to be called now.
What if your pop?
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, I just had a question. Do you anticipate having more classes in your acting studio?
Same, it's been the same way for 15 years.
Okay.
Same classes.
Same classes, same amount of students?
Small size. They only accept a certain amount of students. It's myself and an assistant.
How many students is that?
15.
15. Do you always have this here, or do you have less?
Uh, Mrs. Kenny, come up. Sorry, have her come up, sorry. No, no, it's just, if it was, if it was a quick, if it was a quick answer, so there, but.
Hi, Jennifer Kenny. And I'm the owner of Serato Performing Arts Studio.
But no changes in students or classes, as you said, right?
It stays the same.
Okay, and then, sorry, Commissioner Harrison, anymore?
I think that was about it.
I just want to make sure it got on the record, that's all.
Yeah.
Do people get dropped off then? Because?
Yes, yeah. So the parents, they drop off. I greet them outside. They drop off, turn around. And kids, carpool, the friends, they've been doing it together. The kids grow up to the program. I could go on and on. Like, I just love what I do. It's really special.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. All right.
Thank you.
I have a question from the excitement. Would it be possible to dredge up that, just so we have something to rely on? That old Galante thing about, not, not today, but to provide it to us?
Well, it's, the 2020 record's been included, so.
Oh, it has? Okay.
It'll be in that file.
It's in the file.
And he would have done, would he have done a speed study and everything? Or just, just sightline based on?
My reflection is just a short form report.
Okay.
Because there was an existing back there already.
Okay, oh, that's right. Okay, thanks.
Better yet.
Yeah.
This just in.
Is this it? Okay.
Yeah, why don't you?
We'll get this.
So it's Mr. Chairman, we can scan it and circulate that.
No, that's, I just wanted to see what it was. Thank you. But that's probably in the record from 2020, right?
It was fully affected, is.
No, it would too, just for the record. Any other final questions for Attorney Fitzpatrick? Final comments?
No final comments. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
So I'll close the hearing on this application and adjourn the meeting this evening. Thank you, everyone.
Before you go, is there anybody not available for the 25th?
People that are on this road.
I'm not gonna be able to make this. I'm not gonna be able to.
I will be here.
We don't have really much, the only thing we really have is someone wants to do a pre-application discussion. So it's not a formal hearing, and we are especially hoping to dispense with the first meeting in August.
That's fine.
I just, just first things first, I just want to make sure we'll have an adequate number of folks to conduct business if we do schedule a pre-application.
And will we likely decide this?
Yeah, and we'll, we'll be discussing this.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.